All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call to order the City of Norco City Council meeting for our workshop today, Wednesday, September 18th at 4:04 PM. The clerk will take the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bash?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Mayor Protan Hannah?
Here.
And Mayor Grunmeyer?
Here.
Thank you all are present.
At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Greg Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of discussion items before us this afternoon. The order for the presentation of discussion items will be as followed. We'll have a staff report and presentation, councils' questions of staff, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral to the topics, and then council discussion and direction. So at this time, Mr. Chad, you are up.
Okay, so item number one, it was requested by the council to bring back an update and overall discussion regarding the current status of the recycle water system. It has been a while since we discussed that, so we'll give a -- I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. There's definitely quite a lot of slides in this, but I can answer any questions as you have them, or we can wait till the end. So jumping right in, the project history, recycle water planning began in the early 2000s. The viability of recycle water was based on, at the time, the demand, the expected demand from existing and potential customers would adequately fund the cost of operating the system. Those assumptions back then. And a potential agreement with Corona to purchase excess water that we weren't going to use to offset those recycle water costs. And we assumed we would get a permit, it would be obtained in a reasonable timeframe. Infrastructure that got installed, Phase 1 was Fifth Street to Sierra Avenue to California and Buckskin Lane. Phase 2 was the Rickra Pumping Plan itself. Phase 3 was River Road and Archibald Avenue to Fifth Street and Hamner Avenue. Phase 4 was the reclaimed water pipe installation across the Fifth Street Bridge over the I-15 Freeway. Again, this gives you kind of the idea of the dollars that were spent, and when we did the work, again, we started in 2004, completed all the work in 2008, spent approximately $3.4 million of that. We did get some Prop 13 funding, about $450,000 to help offset. So in all city funds, we spent about just almost $3 million of city funds to build the system. This is a graphic of our system. The pump station is right there, and that's what pushes the water, or will push the water all the way through our system. It goes up a bluff, all the way across basically to Western, up Western, and all the way down Fifth till we go up into the park system up here. So it goes all the way across, it's currently in place, it's not currently being used, but it is in place, and it's been in place since 2008 when everything was finally constructed. The current system status, permit still has not officially been granted, we're still going through some compliance process, we're nearly there, but it still is officially available to us yet because there's requirements in the state that we have to meet at Rickra, and Rickra's doing those compliance requirements. At the same time, we are, have submitted information because all parties of Rickra who want to eventually use this water for any purpose have to have their own permit. So we've already submitted all our documentation to get that permission from the state, but it's currently being reviewed right now. And the infrastructure's been active for over 10 years, and likely needs to be upgraded at this point, especially the pump station, it's been unused, the pumps are likely frozen and unable to be used, might need some electrical upgrades at this point, and we don't know until we really investigate. But it just kind of gives an idea of where we stand. The infrastructure itself in the ground, it should be fine. It hasn't been used, it basically still has quite a long life on it yet, and it should be okay. However, the biggest issue is the cost per unit for recycle water is now higher than potable water due to many factors. The biggest one is simply the number of potential customers that we originally anticipated to be part of the eventual recycle water system and would have demand simply aren't there anymore. And we'll go over those, but primarily some of the biggest ones. Silver Lakes doesn't need the water, as we hoped they might, because they have those wells there, and that water's basically inexpensive because it's such a shallow groundwater. So there's no need there, and that was a large user. As you know, we recently gave back the cemetery property because it wasn't in our jurisdiction, but we've been providing service because Riverside didn't have a system out there, but they built one in the last year, last two years, so now they are providing them water, potable water. We thought we might have a potential big user with the golf course. They have water rights across the other side of the mountain, some wells, but we'd heard and there was expectation that those rights were going to disappear. They have, our understanding is still negotiated, still another five years or more of use of those wells and that source of water, so there's not an urgency from them to seek water from the city or even discuss recycle water. And the other one, again, is, which is still a potential customer, but there's a lot of dollars involved to get them the water, is the LMDs themselves. There's infrastructure that was built when the LMDs went in, purple pipe on the customer side within the right-ofways, but there's no distribution pipe to get it there. So we'd have to bring a distribution pipe to all those connection points where recycle water would be needed. Again, can be done, but it's a cost, and who bears that cost, et cetera. But that's a lot of infrastructure to put in for that use, but that's one of the larger users. Some of the others that we could still do is, again, the schools, trying to bring water down to a lot of the major schools, a lot of issues there, is the schools then now need to obtain funding to retrofit all their onsite plumbing so that it's all purple pipe, et cetera. So it's, and we need to make sure if we ever do any of that work that they're committed to do that and have that funding so that when we come and bring that pipeline down there, they will connect to it, because we can't force them to connect to it at this point unless we change our ordinances and rules and what they have to do. But if we do that and they don't have the funding, then there's a logic there why they don't have to do it. So those are the larger users, but we lost some significant ones that aren't there. And then unfortunately, the agreement that we had in 2009 with Corona, which was actually they were going to purchase water, excess water that we didn't need at a rate of $500 an acre foot, is now voided. It basically expired in 2014, and discussions with them since, that number is basically now maybe $50. They haven't even committed to a number yet. And that's still a discussion with them, but they're the really only market in our area for now. There might be other markets in the future, which I'll talk about, but for right now, they're the only immediate user of that water. But we don't have a new agreement with them, it's been expired, but we are in discussions with them. So, next steps. All right, let me change here. So I want to explain to you why we don't think that the recycle water is viable. Oops, what happened? What happened? I know.
Good report, Chad.
Yeah. Okay, so you should have spreadsheets in front of you that look like Excel spreadsheets written right in front of you, a lot of bunch of numbers in front of you, and we can talk off of those. Greg, this should be right in front of you there, right there. There you go. Perfect.
Thanks, Chad.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure you have. So I can talk about my screen here, since you have them in front of you. I just wanted to give you a quick rundown of how we came up with right now why the recycle water system may not be viable at this point. It might be sometime in the future, based off future decisions we might make, but for right now, I'll explain the limitations that we have. So the first one should be scenario one, and the way we did this process in developing our overall costs versus revenues is, we certainly are going to have, at the top, it talks about the base salaries of employees to maintain the system and general maintenance costs, so we factored those in at max 10%. And again, it's just a look at what we think it might be, it might be 5%, but we wanted to give a starting point. So that basically is $300,000 to help maintain annually and provide services to maintain the recycle water system as it is today. Then we added in all the expenditures that we've already done, all the capital costs, because, again, we threw everything in the kitchen sink in this, so we had the worst-case scenario of what our cost would be as far as to pay back what we put in. We have the infrastructure that we've already put in, those are the first three, that's Rickra Booster Station, the two pipelines, and basically indicated those are 100% required to be paid back. Those funds that we used to build the system was from the sewer fund, just so you're aware. So we assume that we're paying that back as part of the system as a requirement. So we want to basically get the debt service on that money to pay back the sewer fund over time, to make them whole. But that basically, down to the bottom there, and plus that assumes and includes we need to put in a reservoir that we don't have yet to operate the system, and that's the fourth, the fifth line item, which is Snipes Reservoir. That still needs to be built in order to manage the system, because right now, we basically push water through the pipes and it has to blow off somewhere. I have no blow-off. We basically discharge excess water to the river. We need to make sure we have the reservoir that is our blow-off and that we can control the water. So that first section right there, the 4.2 million, we break that down over 20 years to try to pay back the sewer fund, that's the money we want to generate each year from ratepayers. Then we also put in a factor-
Chad, I want to clarify something here. And I mean, well, I'm going to interrupt. So you're talking about the capital expenditures there on scenario one. You're not talking about the line that goes all the way up Fifth Street, are you?
Yes, all of it. Everything that was-
Because the line going up Fifth Street was not paid for by sewer fund.
It was. We've gone through the records and everything, everything was paid by sewer fund.
Even though the community facility district that I belong to stated that that's where that line came from.
Yeah, for what we found in the records, it says everything was paid for by the sewer fund.
But that's not what our, that's what I'm just telling you, there's a difference in the documentation, because part of that was that the community facility districts that I'm paying a part of, it included that pipeline in there.
Yeah, I haven't found any records that it was actually funded by the community facilities district. We've just shown that it was funded through the sewer fund. We can look into it more and try to dive deep and see if there's some documentation that we haven't found, but as of today, we've only determined that it was sewer funds that paid for building the infrastructure.
Okay, I would appreciate if you'd check that.
Yeah, so again, and if we did that, if we do determine that's the case, and that's a less of a debt that has to be paid back because-
Well, but then you owe those people up there that are still paying on that $35 million loan, that's one of the reasons that was put in, because they were told they were going to get recycle water up there.
Yeah, that's an opposite.
I mean-
Right, right, but we wanted, basically in this, we want to acknowledge all the expenditures that were-
Correct, I'm just saying, say, there is some, I'm just telling you what we were told, and what the facilities district, what they were told when they were put in there, and what that money was to be used for, so-
Yeah, we'll have to look. But I've got that noted, and we'll probably look at it.
And I'm not sure that it'll be helpful, but when I get back to the office, I'll take a look at the transcript, and at least it'll tell me what the potential improvements were, and maybe more specifically what they actually were.
Yeah, one way of looking at that, too, is who actually installed that line? Was it the developer or was it the city?
The city installed the line.
If the city installed it, it's most likely that it came out of the sewer fund. The CFDs expenditures were made by the developer, who then turned in requests for reimbursement and get reimbursed for those infrastructure that he installed. But if it was city installed, then it would most likely was paid for by-
I just want clarification on it.
Yeah, see what I can find out, too.
Mayor. Chad, on Ted's line of his statement, when you were talking earlier about infrastructure being up in specifically, let's say, LMD 4, that it was piped to the houses, but is there not a main line? Wasn't there infrastructure installed through LMD 4 in the streets to feed all the lots up there? A main line?
I was, I've only been told there's only one line, not two dual lines in the roadway, versus any distribution line for, like you said, mainly along the hillsides and the shoulders, you know, providing water with all the landscape.
Right.
There might be lines going through that that are part of the irrigation system, but not part of the distribution system. I haven't seen any, unfortunately, I've looked for any detailed plans of how they constructed it. I've just been told that it's been plumbed that way to assume that reclaim water would eventually come, and we would connect at certain points.
And where would that point of connection be?
I don't know, that's why I want to find the plans, to find out how many connections and how far I have to take the pipelines through the LMD 4 and the others that might want water.
Let me add a little bit to it. Everything that's in there has been plumbed for-
Recycle.
-reclaim water.
Right.
At some point, the development was done, and then the line up Fifth Street came, but the Fifth Street line ends at Crestview and Sixth Street. That's where it ends, basically. The thought at the time was that they, we would piggyback to reclaim off of Hidden Valley and have a deal with Corona, which would then feed that line going up into those assessment districts.
Okay.
Because the cost probably coming from there uphill, booster pumps and everything would be higher than trying to bring it in from Hidden Valley. So we would have to connect to the main line in there.
And we never ran that recycled line from Sixth and Crestview to Pike's Peak Park?
Pike's Peak Park, when we built it, we ran it to the corner, to that intersection-
Okay.
-and left it. It is basically capped, you have, we're plumbed in the street to take potable water.
Okay.
At any time, when that line would go live, we could switch over. We'd go open, back into the street, and we would then switch it over into reclaim. We have two lines in there. We have two lines, one potable and one for reclaim, but right now, it's all on potable. But it's been plumbed to make that reconnection back in the street there. That deadline's right across the street from Sue Bacon's house. That's where the line-
Right.
...dead ends. So, and we ran it all the way to the intersection so that that could happen in the future. But right now, we're straight on potable at all of our parks and facilities. We also would have been able to tie in Ingalls from there as well for non-potable water as well. And so when anything we've done, we've tried to upgrade to the future for reclaim, at some point, hoping that that would be a good resolution to the cost of potable water.
Well, I'm going to concur with Councilman Hoffman on, I'd also like staff to look at that, between the, whether it's sewer fund or the CFDs, I'm just very distrusting of Sun Cal Development and Stan Brown, and there was a lot of things that were-
Yeah, I am, and still are, and-
I'm just trying to think of that. I wouldn't be that trusting that something was done, that there possibly could be a burden on the CFDs on that. You okay with that, Ted?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know. That's what I would-
Right. We'd show some of that in the Norco Ridge specific plan, wouldn't we? Under all the water?
Well, I would think there would be something that actually talks about the use of reclaimed water in the specific plan or something.
Right.
I think, and that's the objective. I do know that, you know, you have, and I think we'll have to take some research in there, but I do know that we have, we're plumbed for reclaim, but we're tied into the potable water side of it.
Right, okay. Yeah, so-
Talking to staff, there is no dual piping up there anywhere. It has a main line. There is the onsite irrigation system that is plumbed and colored for recycle water to accept it, but there is no distribution, no secondary piping anywhere up in those LMD areas.
Which would play-
Makes no sense, then, why-
Which makes, at the time, why you would tie into Hidden Valley where there is reclaim lines, because it's a shorter distance than to have to bring it from Crestview and Sixth Street, which is, that's as far as we have plumbed to for reclaimed water. So if, the discussion was that you would come in off of Hidden Valley, so, because there's lines right there.
I don't want to waste a lot of time-
Yeah.
-but I just have a difficulty with that, because you have those homes right by, in LMD 4, that's right by Mickey's Mountain right there. Okay, that's LMD 4, I don't see how that could be closer to take water from Hidden Valley than Sixth and Crestview.
No, that, in that area, which is almost its standalone, it would be closer to take it from Sixth, because Pike's Peak's going to have it, so you'd be closer right there. And we have a large line going through Ingalls that feeds that particular area.
And that whole area around Vander Mullen and all of that. I say there's, thanks, something doesn't sit right.
And so, yes, there's the reservoir we want to construct, so there's the, and this is, the assumption is to maintain the system, we're going to operate it going as is, without any additional customers, no other expansion. I'd admit, I might need the reservoir, which hasn't been built yet, and then we made an assumption 30 years from now, replacing the system, we had to, we'd want to do it on a pay-go basis, we'd already brought in the cash, so in 30 years, we have the cash to build everything we need, versus, let's say, at that time, doing a bond and paying it then, and then doing debt service at that point, which is an option, we can manipulate these numbers. So we made an assumption, again, this is basically the high-end assumption of what it would need to be. So we determined at that point, we need almost $700,000 to manage the system. Of the water available that we'll have, we basically have 780,000, 100 cubic feet of water available that we can get from Rickra. That'll be recycled water. Of that, again, since the only things that are connected to the existing system right now, or have ability to connect, that they're on potable water, is the parks, Wayne Macon, Snipes, and Pike's Peak. Those are all the parks that have connections to get recycled water, if it was available. Right now, those pipes are just getting potable water. So that's the projected demand, so, and then the rest of the water would go to Corona, let's say, that we still have a deal, but they're only giving to me basically at 50 bucks an acre foot, which basically equivalent to .11, 11 cents for 100 cubic feet, so we calculate that, we're basically getting $80,000 a year from Corona. In order to get the full amount, we'd have to charge ourselves 12 bucks a unit to generate enough money to even pay off the fund, so, which is not even close to being viable, obviously. It's not a serious scenario. And again, what I want to convey is, all this stuff up here can be changed. If we all of a sudden take out that we're not going to pull money for debt service right now, I can change that and say, okay, let's say that's going to be zero, that drops that off. If we're going to say, hey, you know what, we're not going to accept this debt anymore, we're just going to say it's lost, for whatever reason, we're not going to make the fund pay it back. We can already tell you, see what's going to happen. This is new, we would have to pay for this, so let's say if we keep that in. And right now, this shows a 50% contribution from flood control, which may or may not still be available anymore, because we've kind of dragged this process on for several years, and they've stopped funding projects. So in other words, so we basically need 336,000. Obviously, this number can go down, let's say if we put it at 5 bucks, that's about it, so it's 5 dollars a unit. Still doesn't work out, even with canceling all the debt. The issue is, we need users, we need a higher value for the water that we might sell to somebody else. That's where we can really offset it to ourselves, to give it, to give ourselves a lower rate or other customers. As I've already indicated, Silver Lakes is not about to participate because the value isn't there for them. Bringing pipes all the way down to commercial areas, very little usage, doesn't make sense, spending the millions of dollars. School districts, again, they're becoming more and more water efficient because state requires them to be more efficient. Is the demand going to be worth it, et cetera? The bigger demands is the LMDs, you know, they're still always going to use water, but is it enough to make it worthwhile? So scenario two, again, going back, and this is if we were to assume Silver Lakes was to come on board, just Silver Lakes by themselves, we would need to add infrastructure that takes it all the way down to Citrus. That's another 1.8 million, assuming we got money from flood control, so we have that factored in there. Everything else stayed the same, all we did was add in the demand for Silver Lakes. Basically, it turns out that we need, our cost would be about 800,000 to generate that. It's now, brings it down to 303 cents. A lot different, but it's a very big user, and it's assuming they will use that water, and they've already talked about overall that they're going to look at efficiency models over at Silver Lakes, like underground irrigation, because that's their biggest bill. They want to save money, they're working with Western on ideas and on how to do things. So that number may not be realistic in the future, if they do the efficiencies they're looking to do. But that gives you an idea of, if you get users, but you need dramatic users, the number can drop. So if you added more on at that port, if the golf course all of a sudden came in, that number drops quite a bit. But we have to add infrastructure to get it to them, and how you get it over there, we have to work with Corona, et cetera. So I just wanted to give you kind of how it can change with the scenarios. This scenario here assumes, which is number three, assumes if we went to everybody we planned to. Basically, the biggest one here is now bringing all the other capital costs to get it to the commercial, the schools, Hidden Valley Golf Course, this is what we'd have to expend to get it in. We're still collecting the debt service, it's now even bigger, because now we're replacing everything. So we need 1.5 million a year into, as far as our costs, revenue to generate. And to do that, and we assume we put all these demands in, including, I'm sorry, that's 173, Silver Lakes. We end up generating 2 million, that means you can change this number down, let's say, to, that's not right, so 250. You're basically right there, so now your costs are down to 2.50, but that's getting everybody in there. Not realistic, not even by a long shot. But again, that kind of shows you, if you get customers on, and you're willing to spend the money to get them in, you can achieve a rate, which right now, 250, that would be lower than our rate for potable water, which is our goal. You're going to have a tough time getting anybody on reclaimed water unless it's lower than the potable water. And there is no mandate right now from the state to force people to do it, so we don't have that mechanism to say, sorry, this is the cost, the state says you have to do it for any related irrigation. There is discussion and regulations out there to require new businesses where recycle water exists to tie into that, and they have to, but that's different than building new infrastructure and then forcing people to do that, because, again, they're buying into a system that's already built, there's already a cost factor there. And the last scenario is, well, what are our options in beyond selling water to Corona if they're not going to pay more than 50 dollars an acre foot? Well, the other option is actually, so if we assume, back to scenario one, and this is to keep just the water system as is, to provide water just to our facilities. There is an option that's being developed right now amongst the Rickra group to send the water up north, to put it in the Chino Basin for recharge. And then we can sell that water on the market rate, which is right now about 650 dollars an acre foot, which would supplement the recycle water system if we choose to, and reduce that cost. For my purposes here, we, again, we would still have to have the reservoir, because we're managing the system, because we want to have potable or recycle water to our facilities that are connected right now, so it's keeping the system running and alive. So basically, this is still scenario one. There's our demand, so basically, we're saying, okay, the water comes in, and we're selling it, and I assume just 500 for argument's sake, just go on the low end. So that's about $1.15, so it's generating about $400,000 a year for us. At that rate, to do that, it's still short, it's 5.50 to try to do that. So it still doesn't work, it's not enough money to generate to keep the system up and running, because it's just untenable. And the reason I put the actual amount, and just so you understand, I put 364,000 units versus the 780 that's available, and the reason is because the deal right now that they're developing, which we're trying to negotiate better, is basically there's a partnership between IUA and JCSD to build a pump station and a line that will take it all the way up north. That's a deal that they're making, the other member agencies are looking to get involved with that. The deal that IUA has done, or is not solidified, but is proposing, is basically to pay themselves back for the cost to build all this infrastructure. They're taking basically half of the water that goes through there, regardless of who the member agency is, and they get to keep that, and they're only delivering the other half. half. So that's why I cut our number in half, because that's all that's available. If we were able to keep all our water, then that number, it basically doubles, and you're getting $800,000, which makes it much more tenable, so if I just say this is 800,000, and this number can then drop significantly. Your under 2, your 2 bucks are under, you're at 900,000, so you can go for a buck fifty, it becomes very tenable. But right now, the deal is being structured, we're putting it at the, at the worst-case scenario is what we might achieve. And so I just want you to understand how we got to those numbers, why 364 doesn't match the total amount, that doesn't make sense, and that's why I wanted to explain that. So, it is an option, you know, but at worst-case scenario, if we ended up abandoning the system, for better words, you know, and we'll get into that discussion next, but this is kind of where we stand. You know, so, it doesn't mean that things, we have to make a decision today, we can keep going for the next three years, as there are plans to be developed to go up north, whatnot, and if you go up north, it might mean that Corona gets in the ballgame, because now there's a competitor, and they're willing to up their price, and we're getting that price for all the water, not, we're not losing 50%. So a lot of bargaining can be done if we get more competition. There's even discussions with, talking with Orange County Water District to pay us to keep it going down the river, if they want it so bad. Because they fought so long to not let us have it, well, if you want it, pay us for it. So there's even those discussions. So, it is not an immediate issue that we have to resolve. Right now, my biggest thing is trying to get some money out of where our water is, and working with Corona to get something out of it. Otherwise, when we do get the final permit, which hopefully maybe be by the end of the year, where we can actually take it out, they're at least getting something for it. Otherwise, it's going down the river and not making us any money. So I'm hoping we at least get that original, you know, that 50 bucks, I'll give us 80,000 a year that can come back in. It's something. We do have an obligation to make sure, where we have an obligation to provide water on as-needed basis to Lake Norconian. That is a required agreement that related to the Bluff site, when we transitioned and got that site, and gave them other services. One of the conditions was, we provide them water source, any water source, whether it's potable or reclaimed, in perpetuity. So, we do have that obligation, and we have a direct connection to that, and we provide them water when we need to. Right now, it's being fed by our non-potable well that's on the Bluff site. But that well has iron and manganese, which the Navy doesn't like, they really would like to get on recycled water. So, and that'll be part of my next discussion here. So it's, the question is, is what's next? So what is the best use of the recycled water, other than direct use at this point? Sell annually to another agency, again, that's achievable, it'll likely be Corona at this point, because there's really nobody else who could take it. Continue to, and provide recycled water to Lake Norconian, because we can easily, we have a connection with Corona already that we built, down at Bluff and River. They would take whatever water we, they would provide us water, and we would basically stop it at, and valve it off at Norconian, so it can't go any further. And basically, that's our blow-off, it just discharges in the lake, and then, any excess, they take. So we can easily meet that obligation, we're not using the poor-quality well, and we're still using this portion of the infrastructure that we built. And that's the discussion too, because technically, that was our obligation as part of the, from the water and sewer, to provide this, so we can argue those costs for that section of pipe was requirement, for example, of sewer. So you don't have to pay that portion back, because that was our obligation, they're meeting that requirement, we're providing the water, we've now meeting our contract requirements. So there's a potential saying, that cost between Bluff, or the pump station, and all the way to Norconian, shouldn't be paid back, because it was part of the obligation. And so again, these are, that's why the numbers can change, depending how we view what is in front of us. Then what is the best use of recycled water infrastructure that we put in? Retain a portion of the system to meet obligations, deliver Lake Norconian, we can do that. And potentially, the other portion, that's from basically Western at Fifth Street, all the way across, we could convert that to a potable water line. It's basically, it's not being used, we would just convert that over, connect it to the existing water system at key points, or, and add, tie everybody over to that. Or it can be a transmission line that just takes water across the city each direction. So we could still potentially use it, and so it doesn't become a wasted asset. Water Fund would have to invest a little bit of money to accomplish that, but it is a way we could accomplish and reuse everything that we did, and we, you know, so that it doesn't go truly to a stranded asset that nobody's using. With that, I'll answer any questions, but that's where we stand today.
Does counsel have any questions?
I guess I'm, you know, because I sit on the RICRA with you, one of the things, and this is something that I didn't, maybe I didn't understand it. If we pump this thing up north to the Chino Basin, and, like anything, it's cyclic, we're going to look at future, I'm not talking about right now, in the present, five to 10 years, I'm looking down the road, how do we keep this sustainable? If we were to pump the water into the Chino Basin, are we guaranteed, from the basin, a certain amount of water coming out, so that we'll at least have a source of water in the future?
Well, for us, it wouldn't be a source of water, it would be something we would bank, and then we would sell.
Because of our water table, yeah.
Would sell to other parties, like we did a couple of years ago, when we needed to offset the deficit in the Water Fund, we sold 1,000 acre feet for about a million...
Like to Fontana at that time, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was like, almost a million bucks. And, that's what we would do on a continual basis, is we could sell the water. But again, the question is, are you selling it to fund the recycled water system that you're going to continue to use, or you've given up on it, and it's really just a revenue source to be used for other purposes? So you have to remember that, is, what are you, what are you going to use it for, what's it going to be needed for? Is it going to supplement the recycled water system, so you can continue to use it, or it's, we've abandoned that, and really, it's just revenue that we're generating, because we want to have that as, be as an asset for us? In this case, it would go and be, and we would do that through the Water Fund, because the Water Fund has, the city has the rights in Chino Basin to put water in the basin, and then we can sell it right away, or stockpile it till we want to sell it.
And I'll let...
But we don't pump out of that basin anymore, because we don't have any viable wells that don't have severe contamination.
I'll let Councilman Newton deal with that part of it on his basin, but the other call, what do you think, I mean, I know those pumps are down there, and you don't think they're viable?
No, they're, they've been...
Are they going to be, are they gone?
Yeah, everything in, related to them, they're probably just garbage at this point. They probably wouldn't even turn.
So what do you think our costs would be?
Well, that depends if we even use that station anymore. Like I said, the group at RICRA is talking about building a station, and we would probably be part of that if we go that route. Or we could choose to salvage our own station and repair that. I would say, as a minimum, if we were going to rehab that station, it'd be probably about 500,000, because electrical and pump upgrades...
Yeah, I know, everything...
But that's something Corona and ourselves are talking about, just ourselves, because candidly, RICRA's not moving very fast, in our minds, to come up with a solution, so Corona and Norco are already saying, okay, if we partner on this, if Corona spends the money to upgrade the pump station, they become a partner in that pump station, they can use the capacity of our water line to bring water across, so they don't have to build a pipeline across. So they're basically going to buy into our system, is what we talked about, and they pay for everything. But now they have rights to that, to use it, and they're basically operating it for us, because I don't want to operate it, let them operate it, deliver water to us, if we're going to take water, at least take the water as a minimum, always to deliver to Lake Norconian, to meet that obligation.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's disappointing, because when I first got on council, we talked about this, and pretty much Orange County tied up, tied up this whole thing, so they keep getting their free water, and all of our equipment rusted.
We actually had our permit in 2005 with RICRA to take the water.
I'm very aware of it, I know...
Never got it.
Yeah, we were told two weeks. The feeder pools at Lake Norconian, I noticed they're dry last time I was there, sort of an offshoot question. If we're supplying water, where, how does the water feed into the lake, but bypass the feeder pools, the mirror pools?
I'm not familiar with the site as far as the pools versus the lake, I don't know if Derek and Hugh know, I'm not sure, like, so we have a connection...
There's a lake, and then there's three pools.
Those are like the little canals that come across.
Right now, right now, they're empty.
Not sure, we have a connection directly into the lake, I don't know how, if the lake feeds those pools or not, or...
Can we find out why those are, they said there's just sort of, there's a technical something going on, can we find out why...
I actually think the lakes feed those, versus the other way.
That's what I would think.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
They're uphill. I'd like to find that out.
Up there, I'm not sure, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with the site at all. But we're delivering water to the lake right now, Derek says, so...
And then the, I had another question that's sort of off this, is the prison is actually digging a well on the Navy base, as an exploratory well, because apparently, there's some contamination. Do you know what that's about?
I haven't heard anything about it.
You find out what that's about.
This is the prison?
Yeah, they're actually going onto Navy property on the north end, Ted and I, and I'd like to...
It's a monitor well.
It's a monitor well, yeah. So you know, you know about that? All right. And then, ah, it's just disappointing, it's just disappointing, I feel like suing Orange County for stealing our water for 10 years. Can we do that, John?
No.
Yeah, yeah, now I know where you're, okay. Now that's all, it's just disappointing, because this was something, when I first got on council, we thought we would be able to do all of our parks, and it'd be terrific, and just isn't panning out, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Trying to give you some direction on this. I'd like to keep us, like you had mentioned earlier, I'd like to keep us in the ballgame, okay? So on a, on a couple of different fronts, that, when we, and this may be a steep question also, that when we have new commercial development, and you do your will serve, do we require a developer to provide two meters, one for domestic, one for landscape, on our commercial projects? Even though that landscape is potable water today? So, every commercial development, we have, we have two smaller meters, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, if we did in the future have recycled water available, at least, we're trying to generate a customer base on that end.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm glad that we're doing that. On recharging the Chino Basin, what, what infrastructure do we have in place? How do we, how do we transfer, how do we move that water?
And that's the issue, is we don't have any infrastructure. We would piggyback on what eventually JCSD and IUA are doing, they have a grant into the state for funds, which they receive, for some funding, to basically build a distribution line from RICRA, all the way through up to the Chino Basin, to where IUA has their spreading basins. So, we would, in essence, be piggybacking to them, or paying a wheeling fee, or be, or have a separate agreement saying, like I talked about, in this case, IUA, to deliver that water to the Chino Basin, which then would be recorded as Norco water, and it's in storage and part of our overall account. We would have to give them 50% of whatever was, went through the meter, they get 50%, only 50% gets delivered.
Or whatever we negotiate.
Whatever we negotiate.
So today, we have no delivery system in place.
Right. We would be entirely dependent on this system that comes in, so we'd be piggybacking on that. But we've already expressed to the administrator of RICRA that we really need to sit down with IUA as a group, not just JCSD, so we can let them understand that there's more water than just JCSDs that might be available to you if you work with us, if you get us, that we're willing to partner with you to do that, and what's the value to it? We just haven't had those meetings, but they've indicated they will try to do that.
Okay. And I think we should keep that option open, I mean, water availability is always going to be cyclical, and, that last time when we, we sold that water to Fontana, that worked out real well for us. So, I'd like to keep that option only, open. And then, the other is, not only selling to Corona, what about selling to JCSD? And we would have a closer point of delivery at River Road Bridge, would we not?
Well, JCSD doesn't have a recycled water system. Part of this overall project with IUA was to potentially build a recycled water system in Eastvale, throughout the city, but keep in mind, that's them using their own water. But again, it's an idea, if we want to just sell it to JCSD, and for money, and we just walk away, and they put it in the basin and recharge it for their needs, because they're very interested in bringing it into the Chino Basin, because they have significant obligations to pay back the disalter. Every year, they have a, basically, a requirement to pay a certain amount of water, or cash, for that as replenishment. So they're, they want to send every drop they can to meet their requirements, which will increase over time. I think they, for the most part, they've determined already, a system in Eastvale isn't viable, for the cost versus the demands, because we actually approached them, if we went to Silver Lakes, would you want to just at least tap in to get the water to your community park? It was a discussion as an impossibility, but they were focusing on the overall system, and I haven't officially heard if they've completely abandoned the thought. But again, that would be another big customer that needs water. But again, right now, they have a well on that site that they use, it's not very good, and they're looking at transitioning to potable, which would be more expensive for them, but there's, we're always keeping in mind discussions, certainly Norco's made it very clear in multiple meetings, that we want to talk to everybody, and we want to be partners if need be, it just depends how much you're going to have us pay to build something, or simply you're going to take more of our water in exchange for them building things. But we're open to every idea to maximize how we get this water, we want it to be used from day one, we don't want it three years from now, because it's taking too long to get this project up and going. But we're at their will, in this case, because it's two parties that are doing it. We certainly wouldn't be the lead on that, because of the money involved, I mean, you're talking about a 30 to 40 million dollar project.
I think overall, we're, we're in pretty good shape, it may not at times seem that way, but I think where we're positioned, we're in a good position, we just don't have the customer base.
Right.
I don't know if that helps you with any direction or not, but it's staying the game, you keep all the options open.
We haven't given up on the system, this is, again, just telling you where we're currently at right now, this is where we stand. I'm not saying, let's just get rid of it all, and do X, because we can't do pushing it up north anyway. So that's not like the, the end thing right now, but in three years, that might be what I recommend.
Hey Chad, just...
Spend any money replacing pumps today, I'll tell you that, okay?
No, and we're not going to spend any money.
Chad, just, just to give us an idea where we're at, acre foot of water, where's about 900 and something, what is it?
Or what we buy?
Potable, yeah, what we're buying right now.
Well, what we're purchasing, it's about 1,000.
$1,000, and what do you think the purchase of the recycled water is on an acre foot, just so you know?
Well, that's based off of what the recycled water, or replenished water would be in Chino Basin, that's about 650.
Okay, so...
So no one's going to pay you more than that.
No, okay.
Because they can just buy it from IUA.
I'm just trying to put it in his perspective, that's all, thank you.
If I could make a comment, Madam Mayor, just wanted to let you know that, yeah, the purpose of this presentation was just to take a look back at what has been done, and then review where we are with respect to the recycled water project. Clearly, I do want to emphasize what Councilmember Newton has said, and that is, all the options should remain on the table, this is still a very dynamic situation, there are plenty of variables that can change down the road, and really, there is no need for us to rush into any decision right now, as far as deciding what component of this to abandon, or what has to be done, and what we cannot do. The variables are still very, very fluid, and there are a lot of options on the table. And I do agree that we are in a very good position, unfortunately, this did not happen at the time it was scheduled to happen, but things have made it a little bit less viable, but still, legislatures can change, there is a whole lot that can change where this project is still, becomes very viable, and I think we continue to, to keep an eye on it, and see what we can do with it, but no decisions to be made at this time.
Any further comments or questions?
I'm surprised Mr. Bash didn't come up with this quote, but it was Will Rogers, wasn't it, Kevin, that said, whiskey is what we drink, and water is what we fight over?
Yeah.
Okay?
They've been fighting over this basin.
Yeah, all right, item number two, which should be pretty short, but I wanted to give you an update on Second Street whitening, as you know, we've been, I'm still dragging this through Caltrans, of getting, inching by inching closer to actually up approved permit, but I wanted to let you know some of the logistics regarding the project that we had to consider, and make a decision on. and make a decision on, so make you aware before we ever get to construction, so that you're aware of what we did and why, or why we didn't do certain things. So, on here, this is the widening project, and it basically shows you Hamner, here's the I-15. So, this is the key area here. This is where adding is a lane going all the way through, a dedicated lane that makes this turn here. It's a right turn only. The other lane right now is only going to be another through lane, there'll be two through lanes. We tried to get two right turn lanes, a right turn lane and a through, and a right turn lane. At this time, they said no, and it was advised by the district engineer, our representative at the top, says, "Look, let's not fight over that right now, because we believe we have the traffic counts that justify it." They don't, they looked at it and said, "Well, we're not really sure, we don't think you do." Rather than haggle this out for another year, they said, "Look, let's just get your improvements done, then come back and have that discussion. We can always change signage, et cetera, after the fact, but let's get the improvement done." So right now, we're focusing on just getting this lane done that will be a dedicated right turn onto the freeway. Now, in doing that, there was a couple of things we had to consider. Obviously, we're considering this commercial property here and the impacts to it. We own all this right of way, we didn't have to ask for anything, that's not a problem. But the one thing we want to look at is now, is we know there's left turn movements in and there's left turn movements out currently. Not the safest situation, especially now that we're adding another lane. So we had to decide, so what are we going to do? Are we basically going to put in a median to block all movements? That has an impact on the commercial property, and we certainly didn't want to have that as the blunt instrument, say, "Well, it is what it is, we're moving on." So we said, "What can we do initially to try to preserve the movement into the property, at least?" So what we decided here is, again, we're going to allow left-hand movement into the property, but we're going to put a half pork chop in that forces anyone coming out to a right turn only. Anyone who needs to go to Hamner has to go out this exit over here. If for some reason, this becomes a problem, because technically, cars could just come through now that we widen it, they can make a U-turn. Trucks cannot, obviously, it's not enough space for that. And most delivery trucks, if you ended up hardening this median, would learn, go down to Hidden Valley, come back around, and they would come in here, or they'd come around and come in that way. So again, there's, they would learn how to come into the property, but it would, for right now, we didn't want to create an immediate hardship that the business would, owners in there would be very unhappy with. So we're going to preserve that movement in here. If it becomes a problem, though, in the future, by left-hand movements, because cars could be sitting here all the time staging to make a right, or there could be accidents, et cetera, we'll look at it over time, the solution is then to put a hard median in there. But then, we feel we can justify it. We say, "I'm sorry, we've looked at the information, but unfortunately, there's too many accidents occurring or near accidents, or traffic not moving in and out, and too many complaints because of the lanes, the number of lanes there now." And then, we can have that discussion with the businesses, so they understand why we're doing this. But initially, we take the lesser approach, was what we're proposing here. But I think as a minimum, we really need to make sure that we stop the left-hand turn movements. We don't want those opposing movements coming out anymore now that there's three lanes. There's just too much going on in that short distance, and we think this is the lesser prudent approach. So this is, just so you see it visually, if we had to go to that route in a couple of years, this is basically what you're talking about putting in. We would, we would take out the pork chop, that's obviously not needed anymore, because it's an impediment at that point. There'd be a hard median in there, and you can't cross it. So that's basically what we put in at a later date, that's if we had to do it. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention is, the right-hand turn movements from Second Street onto Hamner. Right now, our existing movements, let me go back one. Existing movements is one right turn lane only, two throughs, one of them being a left hand, a through and a left. As you know, we, well, in this project, we looked at several things. We looked at potentially widening, widening all the way back here to add more car lengths, so more cars can stage to make a right turn. Unfortunately, the elevation of the property is higher, so if we took this out and made a new driveway, we had to go do improvements on the property, which we didn't want to get involved in. Building a new fence, frontage, et cetera. And we'd only gain maybe four cars. It really wasn't worth doing it at this point. We also looked at the possibility, especially because right now, now that Caltrans has finished their project for the most part, and doubled the amount of cars that are coming off the freeway, we've got two left turn lanes coming from the freeway onto Hamner, onto Second Street, excuse me, and then those people cutting in front of each other to get to one lane that's there. We got a couple emails at the beginning of school year, people just mad as can be about how much is backed up. But candidly, those emails have stopped, the traffic backup has kind of lessened, it's those first couple of weeks of school when people are trying to get classes where the biggest problem is, and then it kind of dies down. But we looked at the possibility of making this a through and a right, adding more cars quicker, adding, let it do it. Problem is, we did that, safety reasons require us to take out this crosswalk, because basically, these people in this lane can't see anybody here who's wanting to come across. So you'd have to permanently eliminate that crosswalk, and people who want to go across would go like this, or they come across that way. But we'd have to eliminate this, so we eliminate that liability of someone trying to cross, and this gentleman who's not paying attention turns, because it is green, and the person's walking even though it's red, as a pedestrian, pedestrian always has a right of way regardless. You hit him, then we set up an unsafe situation. So if, the reason I'm telling you this portion is, if for some reason, this becomes, in later on, a problem, too many cars, too many issues, we have a solution, but it will require us removing this crosswalk and making some signal modifications, just basically changing some signal heads. But we have a solution, but we want it to be a future solution if we need it, because again, we don't look at it as a dramatic issue. I mean, it's a little bit of inconvenience if you're coming across, but it's not the traffic's coming across this way from this dealership to that dealership. People are leaving here and coming to the eateries here or over there, you know, so but again, it's an assumption on our part. But we just want to make sure you know we have a solution if it becomes a problem in the future, but we're taking the lesser approach and just leaving it as is, and why. So that, if it's a question later, "Why did we do this?", this is the reason. We felt that likely council, this is why I want to get feedback before I send this out, are you good with both approaches of basically allowing left-hand turn movements in here, right turns only, and also keeping this as is now? If you want me to go ahead and change this so it's a right and a through, I can do that, but I have to take out the crosswalk. Those are the two issues I wanted to kind of relay, that have an impact to the commercial property and to traffic, and I want to get your feedback if you like our approach, or if you want us to take a different tact.
Comments or questions from council?
Well, I think if you took out the crosswalk, people would still walk. Some of them would. You wouldn't stop them all, then you would have a problem.
I, yeah, I can't say what people do, I mean, people do strange things, I mean, but that's a big, that's, and when you don't have any striping there and whatnot, it's, you're taking the danger on yourself.
Right, and they, they're used to it.
Yeah.
So they probably wouldn't pay much attention to it. But I like the idea of that pork chop coming out there and making people turn to the right on the Second Street, instead of being able to make a left-hand turn lane out of there. That gets pretty jammed up in there at times, even when there's a truck in that right lane going to turn right into there, where Burger King and everything is, and you're sitting there trying to make a left turn, a left lane, a left turn out of that thing, it's very dangerous, you can't see the oncoming traffic for the truck. So I think it's a good deal just to put the pork chop there and force them to go to the right.
Keep in mind, before I tell you, a part of the project is, we're doing dual left lanes from Hamner onto Second Street. So we're trying to get rid of those cars faster, but again, and we'll have signage up there, so people understand the outside left turn lane is only for the I-15 only, because you'll have people trying to cut in, jam each other in, and that's inevitable. But when you have that many cars trying to get there, you're going to have, they're going to be blocking off this driveway potentially, which then these people get backed up, and that's why I'm saying, we'll see what happens. We know we have, if we have to go to it, we know the ultimate solution is putting a hard median in there, but I'm trying to avoid it initially.
But on the addition to that, if you're going north on Hamner, there's a lot of traffic that makes that right-hand turn to get on Second Street, to go up the freeway or go up to school. So I think that's how it is, pretty good. Put that pork chop in there and keep people from turning in front of the other ones. That's just my nickel's worth.
Hey Chad, this is good. As far as the crosswalk goes, I mean, I'd rather see you have two right-hand turns going onto Hamner, going northbound, but if you had to move that crosswalk, I think if you pushed it down, I'm trying to think of the name of the street, it's, it's one right by Paul Blanco, and that goes across the street. Is that on my drawing?
Four-wheel drive.
Yeah, I was going to think it was, I wanted to say four-wheel, and I don't think that's right, whatever it is. But anyway, that-
Four-wheel drive.
Four-wheel drive, yeah, that's it.
There's already a crosswalk there.
And there's a crosswalk, right. It's not a big deal to push them down there, which is, you see more and more people getting them away from the major intersections like Hamner and Second, just tell them, "Go down the other way." The one thing, and this, what we're doing here is similar to what they had to do at Scott and Antelope down in Menifee, Marietta area, where they built that shopping center down at the intersection. They tried this without the, and I just think, want you to think about it, they tried this without putting any dividers in there. No one wanted the divider, the island, and I'm not for that.
Center median.
It just causes more problem anyway, this center median. They ended up putting delineators along there as a visual barrier, and left them open so they could make turns into that driveway, but didn't leave it enough to where it, you could see it. And that was the thing, because people were still making left-hand turns, even though the pork chop was there, and out of the AMPM that was down there, they were still making it stupid. But if you, if you think about it and look at it, you might want to consider delineators.
Instead of a pork chop?
No, leave the pork chop, but I'm telling you, they just, they were making left, even with the pork chops in there, they kept going right over the top of it and-
If somebody goes around it and they jet anywhere-
Oh, they were just driving over top of it, but the delineators-
It'll be six inches tall.
Okay.
Pork chop.
Okay, I'm just saying, they tried this and it did, they had to put the delineators down, down Scott Road to prevent, you know, those that don't want to pay attention.
Right, you're right.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Whether it's pork chop or median there, if you're in that shopping center, none of those customers can go south on Hamner. And that's why people are turning-
Correct.
-left, you know, by the Burger King to get out, that's why people are turning left right now.
Right, come around.
So, with the pork chop or the median, I don't believe, if you just go out that, the other entrance there, I think we still have an island coming down-
Correct.
Past the gas station, so you can't make a left.
They'd make a U-turn at that point.
Okay, so you'd have to go north, go to the intersection, make a U-turn, or go all the way down to four-wheel drive.
Correct. But yeah, you can make a left. It's similar, like we did at Silver Lakes, we just push them up to Sliceman and then turn them around.
Okay. So go back to Browning Dodge with your first right turn lane?
Mm-hmm.
That's our right of way. What's the cost impact to modifications to get more depth to that right turn lane?
We didn't get the physical cost. Dominic and I talked about the engineering involved, because the driveway that's here is higher in elevation, as far as it goes up into the property. So when we bring this back, we've got to cut into the property farther back to bring in the new driveway, and then reestablish their gate that they have right there that goes across it, so we need to push that back. So we got in that, we said, "Okay, we don't really," at the time, we said, "I don't want to get involved in private property improvements, and for a benefit that's maybe four cars, is it worth it?"
Why not?
It is, we just, I traditionally try not to get involved in doing private property, unless they're very, very simple.
I thought you liked moving gates and drive approaches and doing new signs and things like that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, again, we could look at that, it's just, we looked at it, it's just, is four cars worth doing that? You know, does it benefit anybody?
That's where we get too blocked, most of the time, is that right turn onto Hamner.
Oh yeah, no, and that's why we initially, initially looked at it, and it was just the overall requirements to do it, and what we'd have to get involved to make it occur. Basically, I'm going in probably at least 10 feet into the property to develop the driveway. So you're basically kind of creating an open area, then there'd be there, but their property's still over here, so you're basically creating an opening, initial driveway, there's their gate, because there's the slope of the driveway getting to that point. So we just, you know, it's like, "Okay, I don't want to deal with private property improvements at this point." We can revisit that and go back to that discussion, and we'd have to talk to the property owner again to see if they're even interested, and what level of improvements we need to do, but-
I'm just curious to that, because I think anything's going to help, along with that if we have that second right turn lane and we give up that one crosswalk, we still have the crosswalk right to the south, by, you know, the Shell Station and-
Right.
-that corner. Because I think that, that's the biggest impact, is the right turn going onto Hamner and the sequencing of the lights, because the lights are jacked up.
Yeah, I mean, they're not synchronized with Caltrans, that's for sure.
And I think that's one thing we need to work on.
Yeah.
It's, and other than that, I'm fine with the pork chop, but I'm also fine with the median going all the way across there, too. Actually, I kind of like that a little better.
Again, we're happy to do whatever the council decides, I just want to make sure you advised me on it, rather than me finding out later on you weren't happy with what way you went.
Kevin, did you have anything?
So, on both of these, what you're doing is you're getting rid of the turn lane into the businesses there, right? No left turn?
Left turns can still go in, it's a half pork chop.
Okay, all right.
Just can't make a left turn out, you have to go right.
Yeah, and then the other problem, like what Greg was saying, part of the problem is when you turn right out onto Hamner, generally speaking, it's pretty hard to make that stretch across the way to make a U-turn at Second Street.
I know, it's very-
Why are we doing this?
Widening the roadway?
I mean, why are we kind of bussing with that left turn? Have there been problems?
You're talking about coming out of the property?
No, coming to, coming west on Second Street, turning into the Black Horse.
Well, we're not, we're allowing it, it's nothing going to change. We're just stopping the left turns out.
So why would we put a median in the middle?
We're not right now.
But I mean, why would we?
If this became a problem with accidents, because now you added a third lane, a lot of vehicles, either these folks having problems and interfering with traffic here and cutting people off, or et cetera, or people, like Greg pointed out, somebody jumping around here trying to go across-
Yeah.
-and it becoming a problem because they just don't care. Our solution would be to permanently eliminate it, is you put a hard median in, and nobody makes any movements left in or left out.
My fear is you'd kill that shopping center.
And that's what I don't want to happen, I want to, because I do know, yes, people can make a U-turn at this point, because it's wide enough, they can come around.
Have you met Mary Eisen, who owns that property? You would.
And again, that's why we want to take the lesser approach, and only if the documentation of issues occurring over and over again, we'd say, "Okay." I think we've reached that precipice where we now need to make a more significant improvement to the roadway to stop these issues from occurring.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First, I am not opposed to the double right turn lanes going north on Hamner. I think a majority of our pedestrian traffic is on the south side, because it's our high school kids walking home, who are illegally crossing the freeway off ramps. So I think getting rid of that one crosswalk on that other side is not going to be a terrible issue.
Just real quick, if you, if we did that, to Councilmember Newton's question, removing this and doing the improvements at the signal to, so we match double right turn, and now you've got an entire lane that's available for those movements, certainly gets you a bigger benefit than doing this improvement here.
And then, I don't like the hard median, only because I was stuck over there at like 3:30 or 4 o'clock last week, and then the fire department was trying to get through too, and it is a scary deal, because people are not going where they're supposed to go and getting out of the way, and I just feel like a hard median with what I sat through the other day would be a safety issue and time limit, so I don't like the hard median on that. And then, the other question that I had for you, Chad, is the emails that we had regarding the traffic and the congestion at Second Street. My concern, I think these will improve that section certainly, but what I think was addressed in the email, and my concern goes between basically the two off-ramps, because of the staggering of the lanes. I almost got rear-ended today, leaving work trying to get on the 15 South, because the turn lane to get on from Second West on the 15 South is so shortened now that people aren't paying attention. Is there any way to fix that section, or is that all within Caltrans's jurisdiction?
That's all within Caltrans jurisdiction, they determine how that is striped, based off of their traffic model. So they, you know, we could certainly bring something to them as far as general concerns, but they, you know, obviously you know they recently staggered it going east and why?
Correct.
Because they, obviously, now there's two turn lanes, they had to stagger back the left turn movement.
And now that's had implications going the other way, and I think that's what the email was discussing as well. So with that being the case, how much relief does this provide if we can get the lights synchronized, like Councilman Newton said, and get this in place? Does that alleviate some of what's taking place underneath the overpass?
Again, if we did, if we do the double right turns, then it should alleviate, because again, they're doubling the amount of cars coming in, but we're not pushing as many. We're staying the same. So, in essence, if we double what we can push, the idea would be that we're doing it the right way, the question is synchronizing it so it works. If we do nothing, then nothing will change, for sure.
Right, right. Okay, well, and then if, you know, just from my perspective, if some discussion can be had with Caltrans about the mess underneath the overpass, that would be helpful, because it's ugly, and I know it's probably for that small window in the morning and in the afternoon, but it's not pretty over there at all, so. Any other comments or questions from the staff?
I have a question.
I'm gonna go piggyback on yours, if you don't mind. I'm still concerned, and you brought that up, Greg. We're making it very difficult, and I still didn't get a clear answer for the people trying to go southbound on Hamner from that shopping center now.
So the way they, they would have to exit-
They would have to exit.
Off this, off of Hamner-
Yes.
And get over to the turn lane and make a U-turn. Otherwise, the existing would be is they come across traffic, jump into here to make the left.
Yeah, no, I know that, that's what they do now, and it's scary. Making that U-turn, you were gonna shoot them across to make a U-turn. I'm gonna go back to, you got, I know Dominic, our traffic engineer's looked at it.
Dominic's doing, is doing the design on it.
He's done the design.
His design.
So it's gone to them. I'm just, I'm, I just don't know how you're gonna persuade the average driver that's coming out of the little 7-Eleven there, or even to the Black Horse, and to make that U-turn. I mean, they're gonna do it, but it's gonna be, I just, we're creating a problem. And I don't have an answer for you, that's such a short driveway to the intersection, to make a left-hand turn across to get onto Hamner.
No, especially in the morning, it's packed. Right there on Hamner.
No, I know, and that's, I guess I have to, to talk to y'all, because-
Right.
You're the fire trucks, and the black and whites gotta go in there, I mean, that's the problem, I've always felt this way. Engineers are great at designing it, we're sitting here trying to figure it out, but at 2:00 in the morning, his guys are the ones sitting out there going, who the heck designed this mess? Well, there is when they're drunk, so, but, I'm just, I'm concerned, Greg, and you're rightfully so, is what we, we need to look at that, and to see what our count is going in and out of there. I mean, we're trying to track businesses in there, and like you said, Kevin, it's, what do you do?
Even, like, to be candid, there's really no other solution.
I know, that's-
No matter how much your count is, unless you're gonna allow them to come across two-
No, I, no, not that driveway.
They're only going with traffic.
I'm just trying to think, how do you, we're gonna explain to those businesses, because we just, we just really hurt some of their traffic, making it easier to go out and get in. And I don't have an ex, I don't have an answer for you, I really don't. I just, just be prepared that we're, I'm sure we're gonna hear about it.
Silly question for the lieutenant. If, Lieutenant, I have a question for you. If we have the two right lanes there at Hamner, can, from the inside one there, can you still make a right on a red?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just not the inside lane that allows it? I don't know, that, see, I like that idea, because I think it's, that's where a lot of the traffic's impact, but-
You're talking about moving two rights.
Yeah, make two rights there, but the left out of the shopping center is, the way it is today, though, is still suicide, when you're leaving Black Horse and trying to go across, you're never, but the other off of Hamner, you're never gonna be able to move those three lanes over to try to make a U-turn.
Right.
Well, if I can interject, what I do is I go right, I get on the 15, and it's, you don't have to merge, you go straight down, get off on Hidden Valley, and you make a right, and you make a right, and that's quicker anyways. That's what I do. So you're not fighting traffic.
Yeah.
And you can go higher rates of speed real quick and get over there.
We've seen you around town.
I know.
Is there-
Lieutenant's watching.
Just so we have direction to move forward, is there a consensus about, do you want to see the two right turn lanes in and removal of the crosswalk? Because again, if it becomes an issue, we can always put it back, I just, you know, didn't want to do it right now, and people got upset with it, and not have you make that decision.
Robin's right, the kids are on the other side of the street.
Mm-hmm, they are.
They're going to the 7-Eleven, they cannot stop it over to look at Browning.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna have the Dodge and the truck.
They're going to the taco shop and the 7-Eleven.
Berwin, where's the bus station there? There's a bus station near there, where is it?
We what?
Is there a bus station near there?
A bus station?
Yeah.
What, a bus stop?
Stop.
Yeah. Isn't it in front of Browning?
One there, I think.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, I can't remember where it's at, but I think it's close to that crosswalk on Town and, a four-wheel drive, yeah.
Yeah.
It's further north, yeah, okay, so that won't, that's good. I think it's a great idea.
I have one, it's all about.
Oh, hm. Left and go around.
And we'll look at signage that we can put on each of those corners indicating that this is, there's no walking across, et cetera. Obviously, the PED crossings will be removed, all that kind of stuff, but we'll have some additional signage that says, you know, no crossing. At least we had posted it, and if somebody does something, we could say it was posted. And again, part of this project, because we're redoing Hamner this year and Second Street, it's all gonna be new asphalt, it'll look really nice and clean when we do it the first time, and we're not coming out and rubbing it out after the fact, so it'll look really sharp. All right, I appreciate the direction, and we'll move forward accordingly. All right, last one, but not least. Okay, so, as you know, we went through the Measure R process, talked about funding, there were discussions about, certainly about a traffic officer and RSO, et cetera, and desires, needs, general complaints that, you know, they're still speeding out there, and issues, and how do we resolve that, you know, so, one of the things that we took up as staff was really try to look at, well, what could we do? You know, there is Measure R money left that hasn't been allocated yet. Is there things that we can do related to traffic calming citywide to provide an impact, to at least supplement, you know, and support the traffic officer who's trying to be everywhere but can't be everywhere? I mean, literally. So looking at permanent improvements, using existing traffic calming that we currently use, but spreading it out in more places. In the past, we've talked about it, just, we didn't have really the money to put all these things in, because everybody want, hey, I want, I want a speed sign near me, I want this striping near me, and we've kind of said, we really don't have the money to do that. Measure R kind of changed that, at least initially, we can put potentially infrastructure in that's a one-time cost that will last quite a long time. So this is just an overall discussion about what we could do in lieu of, if not doing an officer the first year, or maybe, whatever it might be, is, we can do something else that is a positive, in our opinion, for the community. And this is just a, basically, an overview of, here's what we came up with, throwing darts at the areas that we knew were problems and issues, and what we think that improvement could be. We did review this information with Lieutenant and his team, and they gave suggestions back of what, you know, would be helpful. So we'll jump in here and kind of go through that right now. So, existing traffic measures, we have the roadway marking improvements, generic paving that we, or striping that we've done, chevrons and things to kind of control, and highlight, basically, new stripe, street striping, newer additional posted signs that we put in for very small projects, you know, including, especially on North Drive, where we did all that work to improve that area. We did a rest in red up there, where basically, when there's not cars, it goes to red, and then only once a car comes up and he's close enough, it'll turn to greens, so you don't get that speeding that comes along on Arlington into Norco, they actually have to slow down, then it finally turns green, instead of being green the whole time. So that was one thing we used to help deal with that area, it seems to be working pretty well. We put in several dynamic feedback signs, including on North, we put several in thanks to a grant from WR Cog at the schools, you've seen all those, which included, not only the feedback signs, but the rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks, so that's been a nice improvement on several of the schools, at least it promotes and adds some safety in there. We also added some striping when we did that. And then we did, you know, focused traffic enforcement, this included adding the traffic officer. Again, this is a citywide thing, what we did, we added a traffic officer a year ago, and he's been out there, you know, working, working the streets, trying to be everywhere. And we commonly get complaints about certain areas, we pass it along to sheriff, and they try to do focused enforcement. We also add our mobile speed signs in those areas to gain data, and also just make people aware that, hey, that's a, an area of concern, and we keep moving them around to kind of at least give somebody, everybody a sprinkle of that help. But again, it's one sign out of a whole city that moves around. Ongoing concerns, again, certainly speeding is number one, you know, even though, like I said, our officers have an impact, people still speed, and they all, frankly, always will. You know, we've had issues of people running stop signs, because they're just not visible at night, or it's too, the road's real wide, they're not paying attention to where it is. Similar to what we did on Second Street at Valley, it's so wide there and the sign is off to the side, people weren't even paying attention it was there. That's why we put in that flashing red stop sign, because, and then people started noticing it. I even got a call saying it was an offensive sign, because it caught her attention and she didn't like looking at it. But again, it caught your attention, so great, I hope you stop. So it's had an impact. And school zone safety, there's still one or two schools we want to still do and put those improvements there. Visibility of striping and legends, again, it's trying to decide, can we augment what we have out there to make it more noticeable on the street that there's a 25 miles an hour zone here? Just because you have the sign on the side doesn't mean you see it, or pay attention to it, painting them on the roadway then, you know, but is that a, something you really want to see, is that just more graffiti in people's mind? But we want to look at that. And then again, still a discussion, and I know you guys are gonna review it later on this year, is again, more enforcement staffing, you know, so these are the overall concerns, you know, that we have identified. And then, obviously, then it's the cost versus the benefits of doing any of these things, whether it's adding an officer, adding these materials in, do we, how do we, how do we show a tangible benefit that putting anything, or new infrastructure in, gave us any marginal improvements on what we're seeking to achieve? So recommended additional measures, so we just said, okay, here's what we think we should do. We looked at the city, looked at, you know, to say, okay, here's, this is, if we had money there and we could ask for something, here's what we would want to do, or propose to do, if we were gonna put those measures in specific areas that we felt were appropriate. So we would certainly add double yellow striping on all collector streets, and any steep downhill residential areas, because that's primarily where the speeds are occurring, people are driving in the middle of the road, which means they don't slow down. If they're pushed to the side, then they slow down, because there's, it's a narrow lane, just like we did in narrowing down on North and other places, that's what you're trying to do. We'd add speed limit legends on the asphalt, so when we do this wrapping, we're gonna put 25, a big 25 with a miles per hour on there, every other block, every block almost, so it's just, it's a reminder that this is 25. The signs are already there on the roadway, but let's just put them in the street then. Again, add double yellow striping and reduce speed signs for sharp turns and blind turns, and I'll show you a couple of those pictures, as you know, we just did some work on Dapple Gray and Branding Iron, that really had a positive impact. Add interactive stop signs, and I'll show you those in a little bit in key areas, that actually react and flash when they sense a car is coming. And then, again, add interactive speed signs in various high-traffic locations known for speeding. Here's the example I gave for striping that we did, that was focused specifically because of speed and on a turn, so this is on Branding Iron, so we did the double yellow, we added the RPMs that are the little bumps that you go over, if you go over the yellow line, we added the 15 miles per hour in the road, slow, we just added a lot more material in the signage to say, hey, in this section, what can we do at least to make people aware? And the biggest, again, thing is for us, is the striping, because it gets them out of the middle of the road. It gets them on a turn where we told them, slow down, and, and so they have to go around this area, because you don't see this, this is blind until you get about here, you don't see if there's a car there or not. So this is, for us, our benefit too, that we properly striped it, so that we can say we're directing traffic properly versus not having it as we did before. So we think this is a big positive, I got positive comments from a couple of community members who live there, that they liked the information that called. We did the same thing on Dapple Gray, which certainly has had a lot of discussion in the past, we've had meetings about it, about people flying through this area here, both directions, impacting these homeowners here. I've specifically gotten calls from these homeowners saying, thank you for putting that in, it's made a big impact, we really appreciate it. In fact, one of the general, I think, lives over here, he initially hated the idea, thought it was gonna do nothing, he said, actually, it's been, been working pretty well. So again, same principle, we put the striping in, the RPMs, we put the legends on the ground, again, it's had a positive impact, so, you know, we heard what they had to say, instead of doing nothing, we were trying to do something. We want to carry that idea through other parts of the city that have similar concerns, and get those ninety-two returns and do a similar treatment all over the city. This is the stop sign we were talking about, or directional sign. It actually, only, it's solar, it only turns on when it senses that a car is near. You could be walking in front of it, it won't sense you, because it's looking for something at least 15 miles an hour or more, to say, hey, come on. So it knows by radar signal, just like a speed act sign that you're approaching, all of a sudden it'll start flashing at you, and say, oh, it was a stop sign here. You know, so that's certain areas, and we'll show where we're gonna highlight those. Same thing on directional, on sharp curves and turns, we have some on, for example, on Valley View. There's a sharp turn there, I think it's between 4th and 5th, is that right?
Third.
No, I thought there was one, I can't remember.
Valley, yeah.
Yeah, goes around, there's some, there's areas there, there's several areas where the directional signs would be helpful, et cetera. But again, we said, look, what can we find out technology-wise that might be useful? It's not a sign that's gonna blink all day long, all night long, it only turns on when it senses you're coming. So, and it's all solar, compact, and, you know, so it's really easy to install, and it's a traffic calming measure, it at least brings attention, you're gonna have to stop here, there's a turn here. We can put those in key areas. Where do we look at where we want to put that information? This is that first map that I gave you yesterday in an email. These are the areas where we thought, again, completely open about where we do it, but this is our two cents as staff and working with sheriff, where this could go. We identified what already exists and what needs to go in, you know, so for the areas, you know, these are all gonna be stop signs mainly on Corridon, you know, in those areas, it's only in the east, or I guess that's north-south direction. This one will be a three-way here on 5th and Corridon, again, I get a lot of complaints about people blowing stop signs, certainly speeding through there, and we'll talk about some feedback signs in the next discussion. You know what we did already on Valley View between 3rd and 2nd, we did that striping to help out, and the Chevron, so that certainly helped out. Those were non-flashing, but they're very noticeable, you see them right there, and the resident was happy with that, but again, if we add two, we can always change those, but right now it seems to be working. Putting some stop signs here, because again, this is a speedway, and people blow through that stop sign, that's, I think that's Willow. We already have this stop sign here, we'll have another one on the opposite direction when the CarMax goes in, that's one of the conditions they have to put that in, so two flashing stop signs either both directions. We want to do it here for Hillside, a three-way stop, because again, people blow through that. Up here on Valley, in this area, and here at Hidden Valley, and up at Friesian, again, people blowing through that stop sign. Adding some directional signs along this area that are illuminated, again, including area that are illuminated. Again, including through this area, I'll get into it in a second. This will be a definitely an area where we're going to stripe and really narrow the road so it's not just a slalom. Again, it doesn't mean people will obey it, but we can at least say, we had it marked out and this car that was over the line clearly was at fault because they weren't, they weren't in their lane. Again, we're highlighting the areas here where we've already done the striping, that Dapple Gray and Branding Iron. We're looking at doing over here, what's this? This is a, Eric, what's that street?
Vandermolen.
What's that?
Vandermolen.
Vandermolen. Adding some signage here on Crest View. Again, stop sign here on Crest View. One on this area, Seventh Street. We already have one up here on, on, on North. A couple here on River Drive. Again, we kind of, not put them everywhere, just key areas where we know we have some speeding issues and past history. Again, we can put these almost anywhere, honestly, but I didn't want to create, it just multiplies the cost of things and it's already a pretty hefty cost just to do this. So, and, so, but we can do almost anything here. This is where I was thinking on Valley, those two, we'd add two more signs where that's where the sharp turns are, around that gentleman's house where they have the guardrails that get wiped out every once in a while. And this also includes, and this shows you in here, some of the rapid flashing beacons we already have on the schools, the school zones. We're looking to put one here at this school off of Alhambra. That's just going to be a school zone sign that flashes and highlights that area, because the crosswalk is actually at the stop sign. So it doesn't really make sense to put a flashing beacon at the crosswalk, at the stop sign. So right now, we're not thinking of putting one in there in that regard. But certainly adding infrastructure here on Corona at that school, which doesn't exist yet. I mean, the, we looked at it putting it last year, but we knew we were going to come through with our, our project with paving the road. And we have some logistical issues where their current sidewalk is in relation to where we may have to move their side, their, not sidewalk, crosswalk. We may have to move their crosswalk to an opposite location because it doesn't work with having two ped crossings in this particular location. And we may have to move it like 10, 20 feet down, say, that's your new crosswalk, because of where the other one would be in front of driveways. It's block a driveway. We put a pole there with a pedestal, it becomes a problem. So we're looking at that, but we'd like to put one in there. That's just a general overview we're talking about here. Then we're talking about doing the speed feedback signs that we have. We actually found a new company that has speed feedback signs, has a lot of different abilities and is cheaper as far as to purchase them. We really like this one mainly because, whoops, of this here. It actually will flash on you when you're speeding, red and, red and blue. I mean, it'll, it'll start you. If you've seen one, driving by, whoa, what's this about? And, which I really like that feature. We want to have fun with people. We can go, hey, now you've been fined $180. They'll, they'll really be calling us going, what happened? But they're very functional. I like this aspect versus just the white light. And you can just do the white light if you wanted to, saying, hey, you're going too fast. Doesn't really do a whole lot. Hey, if you want, people doing a good speed, you can give them a little smiley face. Thank you for not speeding. But this is a new vendor that we found that we like, that's cheaper than the current vendor. Again, just a generic reminder of the look that they have. This is how we normally install them with the solar, the sign, and then your speed. And they have a really interesting package. It's an all-in-one. They actually provide you not only the sign, but the pole. They provide you the foundation, be able to pour it, you know, and, and put it together. They give you all this stuff together as a package versus us going to another vendor to buy the pole and hire them to install at the same time. I can, I get it all in one. And it's, again, cheaper, their pole is cheaper than buying it and say from Siemens. So we're getting a very good value regardless of how many we end up putting in. This is what we're recommending is buy the all-in-one package because they've really developed a good platform here. And the other thing about these is that they are all, and if we do, do any of these, we would recommend they have a cloud-based system where they would record the data and put that data into the cloud. And we'd have an online login that we'd give the sheriffs and they would use it routinely. They could find out and get, pull the data on this sign or that sign, what are the speeds for, anytime. And they just collect that data historically and for the last 15 minutes, the last two weeks, two months, they can pull that information and determine, look, I need to go back over here because people are obviously not taking this feedback sign seriously. They're still speeding like crazy. I'm going to do selective enforcement there. And remind them that this isn't just a static thing. We are here, we will cite you if you do that. But they will have that tool to do that. So they have in here, software puts it all in the cloud. We can have access to it. You do pay more extra for that. I think their quote on this was 240 a year per sign to have the service. Basically, it's self-service to send the information. The existing vendor we have, who has the same type of service and a software, theirs is 400. So again, I think there's value in the software. We don't have to do the software. We could just have the signs be static and we don't do that. We could start the software and then decide two years down the road, we don't want to pay the annual maintenance on it anymore. We're not obligated to keep it for any time period. This is our attempt to come up with where things should go if we're going to have them. We tried to highlight where the existing feedback signs are. A lot of them are in the school zones. And up at the area where we looked at, related to, this is a school zone here, on Pedley and up on North. That's primarily where we focused a lot of that work. But these are the areas, again, working with the lieutenant's team, where do we think we want to highlight to people where we get the most common complaints about speeding and issues? Certainly, we get a lot of complaints on Norconian, people flying on bluff, certainly Fifth Street's a speedway. We had a fatality recently happen last year. Again, we have speeding everywhere and I know that. We can literally put these on every street if we wanted to, but we had to figure out where, where should we focus initially if we're going to do something? Because we can always do stuff later, but if we were to do something, where would we do it? We would certainly do one, two of them on Sixth Street. Sheriff really wanted some on Sierra and on Valley, by Valley View, excuse me, they get in this area up here. We wanted to focus, some work on, on River Drive, certainly on California. Seventh Street's a common complaint I get in here a lot. And even though there's stop signs, it's just people still speed in between stop signs and they're gunning it. Certainly up in the hill area, especially on, on Crest View and, not, Wild Horse, excuse me, and Valley through, and even on Norco Hills Road. Again, Hillside, focusing on that too, even though there's stop signs there, this is the raceway in here, people taking off of that area. And so again, we've put it a bunch of places. This here, again, we want to highlight Mountain because Mountain right now is a speedway. But I likely wouldn't put anything in there right now unless the council wanted to, because if there's a development in the next two years, they'd get moved anyway. They get pulled out and torn out and that new ones put in. We could potentially put them as a condition, hey, you're going to put, or match our feedback signs and you put them in for us. So we might elect to say, you know what, even though it's a nice paved road right now in Mountain and it's a raceway, do we want to put something in or we want to hold off and maybe have somebody else do it? So this is generally what we came up with as far as locations and we fully understand it's a lot and, and we don't have to do it all, or you can do more depending what you want to do. But we felt, again, the biggest discussion was, right now, we're just saying no to everything. Is it time to stop saying no? And we'll do something. Because again, there is a big difference, as you know, benefits of hiring one person at about $350,000 a year and that cost goes up versus one-time fees or costs to put static infrastructure in that's there in those locations all over the city. It's always there. I know it's not citing people in that way and we're not going to give tickets that way or anything like that, but it's at least something that we could try to hang our hat on is, look, we are, we do care. We've done this. We've spent this money. It's a question, is it, is it too much? Is it not enough? That's why I want to get you guys involved and say, look, do we, do you want to do this in lieu of something else for right now? So at, at this point, we counted about 38 interactive signs or all those reds that you saw. To purchase them and the software is about $165,000 for all 38. Again, for this particular one, includes the pole already, so I'm not buying the pole from somebody else. Installation is about $160,000. It's about $4,000 per site if we hire a contractor to do it. I'll put it out there, just, you know, I know staff certainly doesn't want to do it because they have a lot to do, but if we had to do it ourselves, because of the system that they're providing where they're giving you all the equipment, including even the foundation ring to basically dig a hole, put your ring in, it's already got the, the support bolts and brackets in there. You pour your, pour your pad in and put your pole on. We could do it and that eliminates that cost, but it's a lot of time out of the staff's time and it will take a lot longer to get everything in, because they're going to do it as time is available because they're already inundated with their other duties. But I just want to be candid, we could put this on our plate, but it will take a while to do it. Versus hiring an outside contractor through an RFP process or using Siemens who's already approved contractor to do that work. Interactive stop and directional signs just happened to be a coincidence. There was 38. That's the stop signs and the arrow signs combined that we wanted to put in. Again, the purchase from, that's a different vendor. That's a vendor called, I think, Tapco. And actually just purchasing it from a general JPA that we're a part of, so we get the best pricing. So we don't have to go out and do an RFP or negotiate anything. It's, it's a set price. That's about $110,000 for that equipment. Again, since the central number and the same type of installation, it's putting a pole and et cetera, it's probably about $160,000 to put it in. And they do offer a pole. They could actually give you a pole. They don't give you the, the foundation piece, but we might buy some from the other vendor and make it easy on ourselves. Then we have the rectangular flashing beacons. That's the crosswalk ones. We only do two more and that's at the Corona School. That's about $10,000 to, to take care of that and install it. And staff can handle that one. We've done all the others. We could do that. And then striping and legends, I roughly guesstimated that's about $75,000 to go through and do the striping that we're looking to do, including the RPMs, the legends that we're going to add, et cetera. It's a, it's a rough guesstimate. You know, I honestly don't think I'm going to spend that much, but I wanted to be realistic. If I'm going to ask for money, I don't want to come back again to try to get the impact. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council have questions of staff?
The striping you did at Dapple Gray along that, that, I like that idea and I like that approach. One question with that under more passive traffic calming, where you did the double yellow striping, if we were to thermoplastic like a white stripe at edge of pavement, so we visually shrink that lane, is that a benefit to do that in conjunction with?
It certainly, yes, does shrink the, the visual because you're seeing outside process. I'd have to talk with Dominic to see if there's any issues with that, because usually it depends on the width of the overall road, whether you put them in or not. And I want to make sure, I don't have that specific right now, but we certainly would look at that. And if it's, if it's something council would support, I would certainly add it where it is legally allowed to be in conjunction with the, with the yellow, double yellow stripe.
Because I like the double yellow that you did there. And I got thinking if we had that white stripe edge of pavement visually, it, it really slowing you down.
Yeah, I think one of the issues is-
Because it's going to look tighter.
Is because technically, you've got to remember, the white stripe is intended to not be the open roadway when you, when you stripe that. So we had a similar issue on El Paso, where originally when we did the, the Slurry project, in the design included going back with what previously existed was white limit striping on the sides. But the actual contractor, the subcontractor came back and said, look, what you have specced here and that distance actually makes the roadway unsafe because it puts the person basically in the middle of the road all the time. And so in the end, I reviewed it with, with Dominic and he said, you know, you'd probably agree, it's probably best that we switch that and go from a, a white stripe on each side to a double yellow only. That way we delineate the road, but we, we don't pushing people because they're trying to, this person's on white, this, now they're at each other almost.
Well, you have parking on the shoulder there too.
Yeah. And, and you can still have that. It's just, the problem is, is that when you have both, now you've created a problem. And I just want to make sure in giving you an answer that we are meeting MUTC requirements as far as how we stripe and when we stripe. But I agree, again, whether, when you have a wide enough road, doing the center and the limit is, is broken. And that's, I think we have that on, for example, on, is it Crest View? I thought they did a white limit sign. I can't remember, but I get your point and we'll look into that.
Okay. And the other is part of the speeding problem, granted all over, but Old Town area, the long streets, whether it's Pedley, Hillside, Tamascul, Corona, Valley View, how do you slow that down where you can just book from Fifth to Sixth or from Fourth to Fifth? There's no stop signs, there's nothing, it's just beat feet. How do you, what's your traffic calming in those situations?
Again, that's why we, I mean, if we, if we added similar measures to that, does that have any benefit? Does it, is it just-
Is that just a speed limit sign or?
Yeah. I mean, that's really what, I mean, speed, there are already speed limit signs along those stretches.
I mean, the flashing one.
But again, we could, you can do flashing signs where it reminds them, but at your, your, if you want to do a proactive, then you need a speed feedback sign. So it says, hey, you're going too fast.
Right.
Signs themselves, just because they're lit, doesn't really mean anything. It's, you're really for the stop because even though they do sell, I think they sell signs that are, you would say 25 miles per hour and it would be lit around the border, I think, but they're permanently lit. But I don't know, can we get them so that they'd sense?
Which ones?
Just the speed limit sign itself.
Yes.
So it has radar detection, so you could in theory, put one of those up by itself on those areas and it would light up when somebody's sensed. Doesn't, doesn't tell them that they're going too fast or not, just sensing they're there.
Might be something to look at.
They can be going 50 and says, hey, it's 25. They can be going 15 and it's still flash. But yes, you could do something like that.
Okay. I mean, that, that seems to be a tough area to try to control and-
Yeah, all those straightaways are all-
Oh yeah, it's just flat out.
Absolutely.
The signs that you showed, I, I like the ones that you, you know, where it flashes the, the speed limit and whether it's a bright white light or red and blue lights or whatever. I don't mean to be facetious, but the one that flashes, you're fine? Could we have like a little portable booth right behind that because people could just pull over and just write the check and go, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, if you can make that kind of combination. But I like those two bottom signs there that maybe those be attention getters. So, you can only chip away at it.
Yeah.
I mean, you're dealing with idiots out there, so.
Other questions or comments?
All right, I'm looking at your signs. I guess they're DOT approved?
Yes.
Califor, okay. Just, I don't want to start something that we can't use. I like the idea of the colored sign between the lights and the different, I used to frequently drive on Railroad Canyon and I was on it the other day. They have the sign that says, oh, you're going 55 or 60 or 70 through a 50 and people still drive every, that radar hits that thing. It shows all the buddies, nobody knows the speed limit because they're complacent with it. And that's the problem we have with a lot of signs. We come to a point of sign pollution and complacency. And that goes back to what you're saying is, if we have too many, they don't, they're not effective. You have to be stark. I think the red and blue ones are that type of thing, but they have to be used in the correct manner. Otherwise, they're ineffective. Eventually, nobody cares. $700,000, it's a lot of money.
And that's why I pointed out, you know, that we could in theory, you know, like I said, if we had to, and if there was desire to put them in, but if we had to do it on our own, you know, that, it's the installation costs that we could save on, but it's-
It's not, because you're, yeah, it'll take you forever to do them. It'll take us a while anyway, but I, I just, like I said, there's $700,000. And that's, I mean, that is, what? That's going to be a lot longer than, that's two years worth of, of a traffic officer.
Right. And those are impacts in those specific areas, 38 locations, actually 76 locations in different-
No, and I'm just-
Versus one guy in one place. So is that a good thing or not? Is that a benefit value? It's for you to judge. I just wanted to give you an idea.
And that was your total package and no one says we have to do everything, but do it in phases.
You decided, well, we like the idea, but on each of those, I only want you to do 20 signs of each type and you determine where you want them to be. We can do that. We're just looking for, is it something you want to do? And if so, then in the end, we'd come back with a request to the Measure Our Committee to say, this is what we reviewed with the city council. This is what the direction is. They'd like to approve. Here's our estimated cost. We would like to request this funding for this purpose. And then we'd bring it back to council for any type of approvals related to any contracts that we would do.
And then I look at the other thing that affects me because I live on Wild Horse, is the downhill and the trees that we've let grow up. And you and I've had this discussion. They block some of our signage up there. Can't see the stop, you can't see the stop ahead sign on the one unless you're right on top of it. And those, some of those streets in the hills are on 4% grade up there and they, the vehicles pick up on speed. So anything we can do up there to reduce the speed or at least warn people to slow- So, anything we can do up there to reduce the speed or at least warn people to slow down, especially on those grades, we need to take a look at. And I appreciate that for you doing that. That's something for us is, because as residents up there, we worry about that.
And we already highlighted, at least on that area specifically, because there's already the double yellow striping in that area. We basically are putting feedback signs on Crestview and on-
Yeah, because all you go from Valley down to Crestview, you pick up speed.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter. You have, you've got to slow down because you're going to do 40 miles an hour, just like you do. And the same thing when you go down from Crestview to Wild Horse, you start picking up speed. So, anything we can do to slow the traffic down there would be much appreciated. But then again, we need to make them visible because right now, our trees are hiding some of that.
Yeah. And, you know, unless we deliberately go and trim those trees, again, I know those, that particular section, I think, is next year, next fiscal year, will they all be trimmed in that area?
And you did a good job, by the way, on the corner.
We trimmed the one tree that was in the way of the sign.
Well, no, yeah, you couldn't see the stop sign. And then, on Dapple Gray, that's excellent. I'm sure the guy that has the, for the Southern California innocent pole that sits right there in the corner of his property appreciates that. Because, as you all know, if that pole gets taken out, that's whole section, all the hills get taken out, just like it was that one year, 24 hours without power. Because that's a main service line through town. So, if you put ballards up there ever, that would be a big thing too. Thank you.
I just had one. As Chad knows, on Pedley Avenue, there's been times when I've told him to put projects other places. I've actually done that two or three times even before you came. But Pedley Avenue is the feeder to the hills to and from. And we get people going 90 miles an hour, literally, and it's constant traffic. And because it's a nice, pretty road, a nice straight road, there's no hills, I'm just wondering if we can, is there anything we can do on that street at all other than getting old pistons and throwing them in the street as they go by and it goes through their car?
I said, it's just a question, do you want to put these types of treatments, whether it's just an illuminated sign saying it's 25 or put a feedback signs on there? We can put them wherever. That's really the only option I have for you at this point. It's because it is, you know, other than striping.
You know, Kevin, you have a school. Could you, he could almost qualify, could his, could his school qualify as a school zone?
Well, it's a private school, so I don't know. But there's no crosswalk there. We'd put, you know, a crosswalk, like the ramp flashing beacons.
We actually tried to get this some years ago when they were, when they built it, and we tried to actually get that done, but they said, "Because it's a private school." And then, we would then be required, if you put crosswalk in or put whatever you had to put in, as a private school, unlike the public school where they just tell Brian to go fix it, we would have to take responsibility for the street. That's what it was like when they began to build it and when the traffic studies first came out, which if you ever want to get a comic relief, read the traffic studies. I don't know, I just wish there was something we could do on that street. And I'm hesitant because you've got a former councilman and you have me sitting there, but it is a feeder street, and it does take a huge brunt from that development, the hills. Remember, Pedley Avenue used to be a T-intersection into Pedley Field. Basically, that development destroyed our street. And so, if there's anything we can do, think about it. I don't know if we need council approval. And again, normally, I wouldn't be pushing for my own street. But I think that we take a really unfair amount of the traffic in the city from the hillside development. So, if council's okay with it, if you can think of something. We got the new police officer that's there, and he's doing a great job. He almost caught me the other day. I was going 36 miles an hour, and I went, "Okay, dude, you got to give me a ticket." And he's like, "Really? I can't give you a ticket. You got to give me a ticket." But he wouldn't. So, anyway.
You only have two minutes left.
All right. Anyway, that's all. Think about Pedley Avenue.
Want to bring us back to another discussion for another day, or if you might want to give me any direction on how you'd like us to proceed?
I like the colored things. I like those colored.
I'd like to see you move forward with, you know, what you discussed on this map with the signage and on that. I know publicly, I can't discuss with you your pricing and your budgetary numbers, but I think those numbers are going to go way down if you were to investigate and bit a little closer on that cost impact.
Well, I tell you, on the signs, they're pretty much spot on because we, I already, I went from the original price, said, "No, you need to give me a much better price than this."
On your sign?
Yeah.
And that complete package?
Yeah.
That's a pretty good little deal there. It's just basically hands-off. It's, doesn't take much talent to install those. And with the software, you could keep that for a year or two. That would at least give us some patterns and some indications of where we have trouble, and then dump the software, you know? So, I could see that maybe on a short term.
Absolutely.
But I'd like to see you move forward with this, but, you know, back, I guess, with the lieutenant or whatever, Pedley Avenue is the same situation that I was talking about with these long, narrow streets. And I'm a big fan of traffic tables and things like that. So, I know you guys think differently, but-
If you're looking for direction, I just assume we do this in phases and take that and work on the priority, maybe with the public safety guys, as far as what your priorities are, the ones you want to do first. I don't have a problem doing the projects, get it done. Spending $700,000 over one year is a big hit. So, I don't know about the rest of you. I feel we're going to give them direction is continue with this and do it in phases. So, it's implemented over a three-year period of time. I'm just throwing things out there. I mean, because that's a lot in three years, but I think that's feasible. That's just my opinion on it. But we do it in phases of all, each one of those sections. So, and then utilizing what you figure from priority or based upon the numbers, the lieutenant would give you where you would start it at. And that's just, if you want direction.
I'd like, I'd like maybe implement some of it and see what happens. I'd like to see how effective it is. You know, maybe do a little bit from, like Chinese food, a little bit from A, B, C, and D, and see which one is the most effective, and then we go in that direction at work.
Is there a, just so I know what the plan for, is there a dollar amount? Because either way, I have to go back to Measure R discussed dollars. If I have a general comfortable level of what dollar amount you might want to start with, and I can obviously spread, sprinkle it around to the different types of treatments in different areas. I'll know my budget I could work with that we would go back and request.
I had a quick question. Do you have in some budget in like your miscellaneous, striping in some of that that can be used for this or not?
It's minimal. It's, that's striping just to put the stops, legends down again every year. It's very, it's $50,000, I think, a year, or $70,000 a year. It's not much. That's to cover the whole city and restryping, mainly legend, stop legends every year because they just fade all the time.
Well, let's cap it at 250,000.
I guess you get it three years.
The only concern I have is that we're directing a citizens oversight committee to do something, and I don't feel comfortable with that. I feel like this, this may have been backwards if the intent was for the money to come from Measure R, that this staff presentation should have been to Measure R, and then they made the decision, and then it came to us, if the intent was for Measure R funds.
I'm not sure if it's backwards because candidly, if you wanted to have, an example, an officer that you decide you want it, and you want to use Measure R money, you would bring that to them to get permission to use that money, and so, in that scenario-
But that would have been, yeah, that would have been a council directive though, not a staff directive, so.
And it still will be, again, I'm just seeking feedback from the council for support of an idea. Staff is coming back requesting and going to present the same idea to them as a whole, and I'm going to come back with a number. And I'm going to say, "I'm going to do it over three years with this number, would they support it?" So, it's coming from me. I just got clarity from council of what you thought was reasonable and prudent in relation to what the overall goal is. So, it's still, and it always was, a staff recommendation. We're just cleaning it up because otherwise, they may recommend it and you going, "I'm not happy with a $700,000 project," and you have to vote to basically cut it. So, I think we're okay with the process in general. And again, we're still feeling out this process and learning it.
Right.
But I think it's been a reasonable process to, in this case, it's significant, and